Yeah. They're right the.
Okay.
Yeah, I know we do have one. It's a matter of the plot was off it's in. Our business would be. Okay, I call this meeting to order. First item would be to appoint Jim Maderas as an alternate to a voting member.
Thank you.
Minutes from June eighteen. Any amendments? Corrections?
On case three, I said George left the inning. Over the end to that to attend a birthday party for his children. So I would be going to the gambling hall.
For his family?
For his daughters.
One.
One of his daughters.
I have no other problem. But because I had left the meeting, I will stay. Roll another bit.
This is Chris, this is Christine. I just had one comment or request. And that is for the motions during the hearing that those stand out a little bit more. It's just a formatting thing. But because those are legally binding, it would be good to have those sort of stand out a little bit more, whether they're in bold or they're their own paragraph. That would be really helpful.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the amended minutes.
I'll move to accept the minutes as amended.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Carter, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
I'm standing.
You're upstanding? I vote yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I mean, yes, also.
I'm sorry, Christine, I'm probably gonna do that again to you tonight.
That's okay.
Yep, okay, good. The minutes are accepted from June eighteen. All right. Invitation for a public comment. We still have two minutes before the actual opening of the hearing. So any other comments before we get started? So Christine?
Yes.
Yep. So we do not have the Mylars present tonight.
Okay, you have paper copies?
No paper copies either. We have copies to look at and review, but nothing to for us to have for our own office for our.
I have one.
Yeah, or for butters to review?
Yeah, we have that.
You have something big enough for a butters to review?
We we do, yeah, but easel.
Okay. The copy.
So we we have.
So it's it's not, it's not uncommon to approve conditionally. As long as you feel like you have enough information to review the application as complete.
And at the moment, we have one butter present. Okay. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the hearing for James Quinn. At this time. And I guess. You have, you have the floor and. If you wanted to maybe show.
Let me paint this chair.
Yeah, proper ocean. I think Mr. Foley is one of the only butters here. And he might have questions, but I don't see any other butters. Just give a quick explanation as to.
No.
Yep, it's Sam, right? Audrey, Kevin, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Kevin with Merity and Land Services. I represent the applicant for the project, James Quinn. We're proposing a two lot subdivision here. It's pretty simple. Everything meets the minimum lot requirements for the zone that we're in. There are a couple waivers that we had to ask for that I want to go over the reasoning behind them. Because we will be asking for planning board approval for those two waivers. The first one is the somewhat irregular lot shape with the lot lines not being perpendicular to the road. And the reason I did that was essentially for driveway access because you can't put a driveway in up here. There's this big buffer area. Everything along here is, it's not very friendly for a driveway. It's quite steep. And so I felt as though the easiest way to do this would be with this proposed shared driveway easement. And in order to do that and to also keep all the improvements on the existing lot. And within the setbacks of the existing lot, this lot line had to go out at this angle up here. That was how I found was the best way to do it. And then the other waiver on there was to not show the drainage field. Or two things, not show the proposed drainage field and well on the proposed lot. Which I didn't do because I have a 4,000 square foot box on there and a test pit. Showing that you could put drainage field and a well in there. But there's no septic plan proposed as part of this application right now. That'll be something that's taken care of at the time of construction. And also the existing lot. We did show a leach field and we did show the well, but what we didn't do was. The requirement states that you have to show the well and drainage fields and standing water on every lot within a thousand foot radius. And we didn't do that just I just felt it was given the scope of the project. It was an unnecessary encumbrance to the applicant. So we're asking for those two waivers. And other than that, there's not much else to it. It's a pretty cut and dry subdivision, but I'm here to answer any further questions that the board has this time.
And Russ, you. Being your line of work, you, do you have any? Thing that jumped out at you or that does it all seem pretty straightforward as Kevin?
So Bruce, excuse me, I'm sorry, just as a point of order, before you start discussing the merits, you have to accept the application as complete.
Okay. Okay, so we have the application. And we have the checklist and I've looked it over. Russ, you looked.
I looked it over and the few things that I felt were not on the checklist before I'd sent a letter. Suggesting that they they amend the plan to show those items and to, I suggested a couple of the waivers, for instance, the drainage fields within a thousand feet. So. They did all of that. And so I think the outstanding things that I had spotted have been amended. So I would say it's complete.
Yep, I have that right here in front of me. The percolation rate results. You requested the signature block for the health officer.
Has that been added? I don't see that.
Yeah, it's under the, it's with the planning board block. There's a spot for the health officer.
Not on this one.
Are you looking at the old one?
Maybe, I don't know.
That's the old one.
Okay, okay, I'm looking at the one in Dropbox too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So percolation rate results and test, that's the signature block and the proposed driveway locations. For now.
Yep.
Those driveway location.
And they provided a driveway plan as well with grading.
Grading, I did see that.
Yep, that's right, yep.
And then the other request we had was. Well, it'd be the waivers.
Yep. Yep.
Where was the driveway plan? I I don't recall seeing that.
Yep, it came, it was in the same Dropbox spot. There's a plan and profile. And it shows in plan view the grading and then the profile shows the slope of the driveway. And you can see the the widths of everything. The common part of the driveway well exceeds our requirements. And once it becomes each two separate driveways, they meet all our requirements.
And then we requested the easement, trap of easements.
Yep, and the easement is on the, there is an easement shown graphically on the subdivision plan. I don't believe we received a deed or any written description, but I don't think you would get that until you actually sold something. And from, from my perspective, the deed is going to reference the plan. And anything that's on the plan is part of the deed. And since the easement's on the deed, everything that's on this plan is part of that.
Can be transferred to the deed once it's registered as an accepted subdivision. Does that all sound right to you, Christine?
Yes, exactly. We would have to approve it because there's no existing lot yet, hasn't been created, the new lot. I I saw the driveway plan. Thank you, Russ.
Any other members have any questions on our application? And the. Two requests for waivers and the added additional items that have been amended to the plan and the other. Offset, Carter?
No, I know.
I guess we'll all entertain a motion then to accept the application. Yeah, Christine, so for butters to to. To have time to talk with, do we do that after we accept the application?
Yeah, so first we have to accept it as complete, then we discuss the merits of the application. Or actually, first butters get to ask questions and then we discuss the merits.
So first we need to accept the application before we can discuss.
Exactly, because that triggers the 60 day time period for 65 day time period for approval or disapproval.
So I will entertain one to accept the application for this.
Second.
I'll accept it.
I'll make motion to accept the application as submitted.
Second.
So Carter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I vote yes.
Yes, yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Okay, motion to accept application is approved. And and now at this point.
Should we? Make a motion to approve the waivers or the waivers before we go?
I think you should hear from the butters first.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Foley? We have a microphone.
What you've done is accepted the application.
Getting from the microphone so I can hear.
No, not approved. That's right.
It's very hard for me here sitting there. Everybody changed so it's all day and very good. So it's hard to hear all your conversation. But I have worked on James property and I know. Then he mentioned. And these two. House lots get to reach a three acre minimum. Or is it some kind of a? They're all unlikely fed up in different areas. Like on the common side, have they needed three acre minimums?
Yes.
And I'm kind of surprised that he. And the group hasn't submitted a septic system design. There's a lot of water on that property in that group. There runs in the temperature. It was very important. For fisheries. I'm not. He had to try to change the trouble, but I'm just interested. In this man across the street. Do you have any idea what what type of type of house is that applying? Or is there something that's gonna happen with?
People are free family.
Free family?
Not my family.
But they're gonna have it yourself. They won't.
We've got to.
Yeah, Dave, Dave, it's it's just one, one building, one house. Only one house. No, because it's.
It's already one.
It's already one. We're breaking off a piece of the three. That's right, yeah, this is one new block for one house.
I love that. It's still glad I couldn't be explained honestly and shown. Because that's the point for me to see that.
Yeah, well, Kevin, could you show Mr. Foley the test pit and on the proposed new lot and the?
So we have people too, if they were visiting house. Or want.
Also, now, now, this is the, that was. And. But Jim tried to. One makes it inside. And yes, so you've already done that, another driver in a week.
No, that's a proposal.
Well, there is some kind of drivers, so. Is that, you can continue that one?
Yeah.
That's gonna be up on the.
There. It's a lot higher down than. Yeah. And it's more of a lot here.
And then a job comes to the court.
I spoke with Pete Caserole about a half an hour ago and he thought that where the proposed site would be for septic where the test pit was done is all beautiful sand. A perfect spot for a septic. That was his opinion from what he witnessed.
I could also just add that Pete will still have to approve the septic design just because he approved the test pit. That's not the end of the process. He will still have to look at the septic design to approve that.
It's just saying, yeah.
Right now, we have, that's the biggest that they're in, it's thirty whole town, but they're still having to go through the saving process. So I said, so that's not really sad. Based on twelve, they're leaving the deal. Approved, but that's actually been done.
So all this area around here is is marking the development. Well, that's in the. All right, that's interesting. I just know that you have to see what's going on.
Sure, it's very good. I think that there are.
Yeah. And you've, you've still got a lot in the house.
Yeah.
What do you mean, you want that?
Yes, you want to go and take your account.
All right.
Yeah, you like to face it close when you look at it.
Well, that's yours, I. I can get back to you, I see you.
Yes.
All right. You have any idea if we're gonna do that bridge? It's gonna be like that's in the south.
I think they're gonna try to do that this year and maybe next week. It's been a long, long month. It is. All right, well, I see that.
Good to see you there.
Yes, you did.
So I don't see any other butters.
If there's, if there's no other public comment, then you can close the hearing and the board can deliberate.
Okay. So if there's nothing else to say, then I will officially consider this hearing closed. And now the board, we can deliberate on the application. So we, the things we do know is that the plan meets all our criteria, our town zoning with the. With the few waivers. And that we are at this point right now just missing some documents, meaning the plans to sign and the Mylars. And I think we could probably approve this subdivision.
This conditional. Well, do the waivers now, Bruce?
So we vote on the waivers? We should vote on the waivers?
Yep.
No.
Christine?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion from the board on the waiver, the the two waiver requests.
I guess I'd move to that we approve the waiver requests.
Second.
Carter, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes, yes.
Christine?
Yes.
The waiver requests have been approved by the board. Now back to the application. All the other requirements that we asked have been met. Is there any reason for us to not approve? This?
Have they, have they received the New Hampshire DES subdivision approval yet?
Kevin, Kevin says it's pending.
Pending, okay. So then we also, and we need the Mylars and the paper copies. And I think we have a final PDF or electronic version already, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And then what about the checks?
Yes, we have a check. I know we have a check for the application and all of that. I think we may still need a check for the postage, the notification.
And the registry deeds?
And the registry of deeds, yeah.
Okay. And then a third thing would be the locations of the monuments. A third condition would be the location of the monuments, which are typically set when the certificate of occupancy is issued, correct? I think that's what's on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay. And and I just have, you know, there's the standard statement we put in whenever there's wetlands on the property or any water, just that they have to follow New Hampshire DES. Wetlands requirements. But my, my only other outstanding issue was on the common driveways and this is more of a procedural. Little question for us as a board, because in our driveway regulations, it said a shared driveway or common driveway has to be approved by the board, by the planning board. So I I would think that we would have to have a motion for that.
Okay.
That makes sense, Christine.
And then I guess.
Thing for us.
It's not very common, so I've never done it before. So I guess I'm putting that to you, Bruce, because I don't know how it was done when it last time with the shared driveway. I think that was your PRD, so.
Well, I think to to be wise for the board to actually have a vote on accepting the shared driveway. So it's on record that we acknowledge, you know, the.
Yes.
So who?
We have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion is. For the board to approve the shared driveway for this subdivision. Application, Carter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes to accept the common. Shared driveway, excuse me. So I guess I'll accept the motion to approve this subdivision with the. Everything that Christine had mentioned would be.
Your DES approval, delivery of the Mylars, the paper copies and all the fees. And the location of the monuments to be set prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. These are all conditions precedent proceeding.
Is that a motion, Christine?
Sure. I don't know if I, can I make a motion if I'm remote?
I don't find a problem with it.
Okay.
I don't think the certificate of occupancy should be part of this until the house is built.
Right, so it's approved. It's, we're just saying the monuments, they don't have to set the monuments yet. That's not, it's like we're waiving it at this time.
Yep, Kevin's gonna chime in from Merity.
I just wanted to say, rather than making the condition before the certificate of occupancy, we could just say before the, before recording at the registry.
That would be better.
Something, because we don't really have to wait until the house is built and the certificate of occupancy is done, right?
Yeah, monset before recording the plan.
Right, okay.
So you want to make the motion, Christine?
I'm writing it in the notice of decision now. So the motion is to approve the application as submitted with the waivers that have been granted. With the conditions precedent of approval of the subdivision of land from New Hampshire DES. The delivery of two Mylars and two paper copies specified in our regulations, the size, et cetera. And the fees associated for the application. And the location of the monuments to be set prior to recording at the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Russ. Carter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes, yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Okay, this subdivision has been approved. All right, good. So you'll be in touch, Kevin, with Russ and. Can I solve that? Yep, that's true, that's right.
Those ones that are sitting on my desk.
Yeah, because Carter has to sign them and I have to sign them.
Right.
And we need to get them to the registry.
So I'll be.
Okay.
Very good.
That was my next question, before Kevin leaves. If if we could just, I don't know, Russ, if you have the checks for the other application for the Oxman application, but if we could get checks for at least the application and the posting fees. Because we're just, you know, we're just sitting on that right now. So the registry of deeds, you know, we can take it when when we're ready to file, but.
I think all of the checks, like the application checks.
No, Carol doesn't have them on the office either.
She does not.
Yeah.
The whole thing. So we can get together sometime this week and I. So we can get together sometime this week and I can get that stuff from you and the MyLars and everything.
Yeah, yeah, something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah.
Careful.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Jim.
And, um, Russ and Bruce, I'll get you, um, the electronic version of the notice of decision so that can be delivered within five days.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and I mean, it's a draft. You'll just have to review it and check it, but um, it's pretty much ready to go. Just, you know, have to add the discussion from tonight.
Okay, good. Thank you, Christine. Uh, okay, here we are, uh. It's time for the Pam Kingston and the steering committee's final report on best, uh, our best top brand, uh, housing opportunity. Grant? We're, we're excited to hear.
She had a document in front of you.
Already, well, I read it at home.
Um. Here's what I love to be all about. The work that I've done the last fourteen months on this. Um, I get it. To completion. Um.
I can't hear very well.
How about now?
Yeah.
Not much better. Thank you.
Um, also, Russ, Carter, Kathy, feel free to jump in if there's something that you think of, um, that's pertinent that I've missed. Um, so you received at the beginning of 2024 a document that Ivy completed that was the summation of all of the outreach that we did during 2023, uh, which was primarily education on her part, educating the community on the needs of, um, housing throughout the entire state, what that situation looks like. So you received that document. In that document was also, um, a summation from the Harvest Festival when we had a visual preference survey that we were working on. Um, so from that visual preference survey, we created in 2024 our interview questions. Um, instead of doing forums that didn't bring a large number of people out, we used the town's email blast, um, both Facebook sites and just requested anybody that wanted to have one-on-one interviews talking about all things housing with any member of the steering committee to please reach out. Um, and it panned out that although it's not um, a huge number, we actually received many more than what we anticipated, which was forty-four, I believe in total. Um, and of those forty-four, the majority of them had never attended a forum. So we had not already heard from those folks. Um, the other thing we found is that the folks doing one-on-ones felt very comfortable talking to the people that they were having the interview with and felt comfortable in sharing their comments and their feedback on all of our topics. So from that visual preference, we took the seven most preferred, could you see this in Temple images? And that's what you've got in front of you.
I don't have a problem if you want to sit and do that. You don't have to stand for this whole thing. If you want to take the microphone when you need to, Jared. Everybody else think, okay with that?
Yep.
However, you want.
It doesn't matter. If I'm going to turn pages, I might end up dropping them if I've got one hand with the mic. That's fine. I'm good. I'm good. Um, so we took the top visual preference, um, images from 2023, and that's what we incorporated into our one-on-one interviews. In the one-on-one interviews, our question started off with, is this something that you can see in Temple? Can you see this fitting in in the schematics of our very rural, lovely community? Um, and the community that we all love the way that it is. Um, and then also we focused on questions regarding parking, because we currently have, um, a requirement for four parking stalls per unit or home. Um, that was one of the big takeaways that most was unanimously, for the most part, that that's outrageous. Um, and when asked, what do you envision? Most folks all said two. Should be the most we should mandate. Um, as we worked through these, um, images, of course, we had everything from the folks that said, look, what people do on their property is totally up to them. Who am I to tell them what style home to live in? I'm concerned solely about the boundary lines and, um, septic and wells. You had that end, and the other end was no, we don't need any more housing in Temple, or we're fine with what we have, um, and everything in between. Um, but I will say, I, and folks that were on the steering committee, correct me if I'm wrong, um, I was very surprised at how open people were to the options. Um, and you'll see that when we look at the statistics in the back. Um, so the first thing that did come out of this was on the, um, parking. The second thing that stood out and got the most commentary was not requiring twice the acreage for detached ADUs. Um, so as far as true zoning options, changes to consider, those were the two biggest that were pretty much universal across the board. There were some folks that said, no, make it bigger acreage if you're going to have a detached ADU, but that was very few and far between. Um, if you skip through your document that you've got, you have every image that we showed. We explained what it was. For instance, the very first one you see, the connected farmhouse, big house, little house, back house, typically barn. Currently, we cannot, if a home like this had existed and it's been converted to a single-family home, it cannot be converted back to a multifamily home. That did get commentary that said, that doesn't necessarily make sense. Um, but again, it wasn't the main focus of the interviews. It was, can you see this in Temple? But most folks said, I can see big house, little house, backyard barn in a pre-existing home, doing that to a pre-existing home as compared to having someone come in and making something like that. Um, second one was the row of cottages, which was the least favorable of all of the images that we showed. Um, this image is actually from up in Harrisville. Um, and it's where workers, you know, in the mills would have lived and rented. The idea of the row of cottages is that you do not own the land underneath your building. You rent it or you can buy it as a condo. Um, there could be a homeowners association associated with it. This one particular one got, um, one of the very lowest scores of all of the different options that we showed. Okay. And under each of these, we actually included the verbatim verbiage that every interviewee said in regard to each particular house. So the bullets that you see, um, you see a summary of the type of housing, and then you see the actual responses under every image that you've got. So this is what people in Temple actually said about every one of these. Um, you'll notice that ADUs was included. We do know that we already allow ADUs, but it's surprising the number of people that don't know that we do. So this was more for education purposes, um, than anything else. Again, the biggest takeaway was they're great anywhere. Um, it's great for senior folks to be able to live or young families to come back and move to, um, with parents. And also the parking doesn't need to be for, for an ADU. The next one is the detached ADU. Um, same thing, focus mostly on commentary about, no, you don't need the parking. Um, the main comments were only if septic and well allows. Well, we don't build anything in Temple if septic and well doesn't allow it. So, um, the other concern was what if someone subdivides it? And in that regard, there was, um, discussion that the larger we make a lot in order to have a detached ADU increases the likelihood that that detached ADU will be further away from the main house, which then would need its own septic, its own well. And yes, indeed, it could be subdivided further down the road. If you don't increase to twice the acreage, the likelihood then is that that detached ADU is much closer to the home and wouldn't fit setbacks and all of the other three hundred feet of road frontage and all that other, um, that would be required for subdividing. So those were the two big concerns or the one big concern, and then the other side of the coin, um, that was heard on that one. Next is Pocket Neighborhood. Um, Pocket Neighborhood, this is actually an image of the Pocket Neighborhood that Jack Beltate built down in Peterborough, um, on Church Road, right off of 101. This was before they were actually all landscaped and everything else. The Pocket Neighborhood is different than, um, the row of cottages that we saw in that you do, the owner owns the home and they own the land underneath it. They are closer together, um, shorter road frontage, less maintenance on roads, um, less maintenance on the yard, um, smaller homes typically. Um, next one, boarding house. Um, this one, the main takeaways were, I think the majority of folks wanted to make sure that the owner lived in one of the bedrooms. Um, we do know these exist. Most of these, a lot of these exist without permission because, uh, they just go ahead and do it out of necessity because they need an income for whatever reason, um, and they've got a big house and they're renting out homes. This one was not one of the top performing options, um, of the seven. And then the last one you can see is a duplex. Same thing, asking them about, um, parking and again, unanimously, two parking stalls per unit seems to be more than adequate. The last question we asked them after the specifics on each of the, um, visual preferences was, um, what else would you like us to know? So I think it's important that you read those pages. Um, some folks reiterated what they had already said as comments under each of the houses, but other folks took it a little bit further, uh, for instance, citing the need for elderly housing in Temple. Um, or another one I remember was the whole issue will resolve itself in twenty years when, um, folks pass along and their home sells and someone else moves into it. So there's a whole range of commentary there. Uh, we did see comments when we were showing these images of whether it be the Pocket Neighborhood or, um, when we were showing the, uh, row of cottages commentary that the Skledany Land or Temple Elementary School land, which is how we identify the land up there, um, could be areas of development that folks were open to. Um, but also with the caveat that it had gray buffers and conservation land. Um, what else am I missing on those? The folks that said Skledany, is there something I'm missing? Oh, tiny homes was something else for those two locations. Yep. Yep. So I think it's important to make certain that you also read those comments because they could have been off topic from what we were specifically asking, which is why we said, what else do you want us to know? Um, someone went so far as to tell us how we should actually structure our, um, zoning board, planning board, and another position in between there. So you'll see that in there too. Um, which is interesting. Um, so if you look at the statistics, um, so forty-three interviews were conducted. We asked everyone after they went through all of the images and said, could they see it or could they not see it in Temple? We then asked them the harder question, can you please rank these seven? One being your most favorable, seven being your least favorable. And you can see here that five people didn't rank them at all. Um.